Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular planning board meeting, July 27, 2023. Can everybody, oh, no. Can we take a roll call, please? Mr. Bernardo?
Here.
Mr. Katzoff? Mr. Jacobson?
Mr. Lilly?
Here.
Mr. Heineman?
Here.
Mr. Camudi?
Here.
Mr. Deol?
Here.
Councilman McAvoy?
Here.
Councilman Roman?
Here.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Here.
Chairperson Pearson?
Here.
Board engineer Gonzalez? Mr. Messara, your attorney? And Mr. F zoning officer?
And Marcy. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America, to the Republic, who stands as one nation, without individualism, liberty, and justice for all.
The notice, I'm sorry, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Verona Planning Board being held in person in the ballroom of the Verona Community Center. The time and date of this meeting were included in the annual meeting notice posted in the community center and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona City Road Times, and the Star Ledger, at least 48 hours preceding the start time of this meeting. A public comment period will be held in order as listed in the meeting agenda, and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time. All meetings are recorded. Those wishing to speak during any public comment period should only provide their name and municipality. Street addresses are not required. Please be advised that should a member of the public choose to state their street address, it will not be redacting from the recording. That said, if any members of the public would like to make a public comment, you have three minutes to address the board. I think it's three minutes. It could be four. It might be four. You could have four minutes. And on any item in particular, and you just state your name and municipality. Seeing no one, we're moving on to E, approval of minutes. Has everybody received the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on June 22nd? Any comments that you may have preemptively sent or hopefully incorporated or corrections? If not, and everything looks okay, can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 22nd?
I'll need to recuse me if I was not presented.
Okay?
As will I.
As will I. Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Bernardo makes the motion. Vice Chair Freski seconds. No roll call, right? All members that vote to approve?
Aye.
Anyone not approved? And once again, the recusals are Councilman McAvoy and Roman and Mr. Camudi. Okay. Moving on to F, reorganization of the board. The oaths of office have already been administered by the Planning Board Attorney, Mr. Messara. And we are now moving to nomination and election of chairperson. Can I get a nomination for somebody to serve as chairperson from anybody on this board?
Nominate Jessica Pearson.
Are there, Mr. Freski nominates me?
I'll second it.
It's seconded. Are there any further nominations for any other member of the board? That has to be done. Okay? So Mr. Freski makes a motion. Mr. Camudi seconds. Do we do a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please. Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Camudi?
Yes.
Mr. Deol?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Abstain.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
And Chairperson Pearson?
Sure.
Okay, and now we could move on to nomination and election of vice chairperson. Would anybody like to nominate anybody for chairperson? Vice chairperson, I'm sorry, vice chairperson?
I make the motion to nominate David Freski as vice chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Lilly seconds. Are there any further nominations for vice chair for any other members of the board? Seeing none? We have a nomination by Mr. Camudi and a second by Mr. Lilly. Can we get a roll call vote, please? Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Camudi?
Yes.
Mr. Deol?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes. The next concerns Resolution 202308, appointment of Marcy Macarelli as acting board secretary. How do I approach this? Read, do I read the whole thing?
No, no, that's fine. No, this is for.
That's for Marcy.
This is the resolution, but you take it here.
Nominate me.
Nominate me.
Okay. I will make a nomination to appoint Marcy Macarelli as acting Planning Board Secretary. Can I get a second? Councilman Roman seconds. Do we go roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, please. Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Camudi?
Yes.
Mr. Deol?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
And Chairperson Pearson?
Yes. Now, is that the vote reflected?
Yeah, that's on there.
All right, so the resolution passes as a result of that vote. Okay. Next, we have the appointment of Planning Board Attorney, Mr. Messara. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to move that resolution.
Okay.
I will second it.
And so Councilman Roman moves. Councilman McAvoy seconds. Can we get a roll call vote, please? Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes, and well deserved.
Mr. Camudi?
Yes.
Mr. Deol?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
And Chairperson Pearson?
Absolutely, yes. And that passes that resolution. You have all the moods and the this and the that. Okay. Next is just memorializing our meeting schedule that we already voted on back in May. So can I get a motion to move a memorialization of our roll call vote held on May 25th for the listed meeting dates?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bernardo. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Heineman seconds. Can I get a roll call, roll call vote for this? Meeting dates. All?
Aye. Love it.
Any against? Okay. And no extensions. And also, a resolution, we need to move designating the official newspapers for all advertising of notices and to receive notices of meetings. I think that's a little redundant, but it's the Verona City Road Times and the Star Ledger. Can I please get a motion to pass this resolution? Councilman Roman moves. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lilly. Do we need a roll call for this? All members in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? And no extensions? The resolution passes. Okay. Designation, I'm sorry, reorganization of subcommittees. You all should see a list of who was on what last year. What did I miss? Nothing yet. We're going to come back to that next one in Section H. Did you read this thing that I struggled to draft? Okay. All right. So who would like to serve on the Architectural Review Board Committee?
I would like to call in here again.
Okay. That would be Councilman Roman.
I'm happy to remain on that if I got no name to say.
Mr. Camudi? Anyone else? Just know that architecture, when it comes to our zoning ordinance, some of what we drafted in our master plan was to have a more cohesive design in our downtown. This is the kind of subcommittee meetings that you could be having to discuss these sorts of issues. So.
Do we know it?
Right? Exactly. So does anybody else want to throw their hat into that ring or not? Mr. Gonzalez? I'll jump on that. Okay. Site Plan and Subdivision Committee. Mr. Messara, correct me if I'm wrong, but written into our ordinance, the Site Plan and Subdivision Committee have the right to determine whether an application is complete or not. They can meet before it is scheduled on our agenda to make a determination. It's written into our ordinance.
Right, well, primarily, it's the job of the.
Zoning official.
The zoning official, right, with the input from the members of the subcommittee.
And the Site Plan and Subdivision Committee, since I've been serving on this board, has never met. So just to give the board sort of an idea of when it would be warranted for them to meet and what sort of issues they would be discussing in that potential meeting, could you elucidate? Yeah, you.
Well, anytime, I mean, if the zoning officer receives an application, then the zoning officer can call upon the members of that committee to review the application.
But if he doesn't, then it doesn't.
I mean, it's not finding or there is no.
Right.
There's no remedy, and in fact, it doesn't happen.
Right.
And it doesn't impact the applicant whatsoever, but the zoning official should really, and maybe the board secretary, Ms. Macarelli, can notify the zoning officer to please contact the members of the Site Plan and Subdivision Committee so that they can review an application. That many times brings you into the question of, and then what's the interaction with the applicant at that point? Many times, in many towns, there are pre-application meetings where applicants try to get a sense of the feeling of the board.
Yeah.
Now, you have members, you know, limited members, whether it be two members or three members on this committee, you know, there's generally a back and forth, and then people on the committee, because they're on the committee, are, you know, would have the ability to relay information to members of the board prior to the application or during the presentation of an application. So there's a fine line between making promises and rejecting an application and doing your job as kind of listening and then disseminating the information.
See, I didn't necessarily think it to be a meeting with the applicant themselves. I thought it more to be reviewing the documentation for the application and making a determination as to what more documentation should be supplied for it to be deemed complete and put on the agenda for the board.
Certainly part of the role, but.
But I didn't think that it would be, I kind of don't agree that sitting down and then having a pre.
Coffee with the applicant?
Yeah, speaking with the applicant. I'm not sure that that's kosher.
Many towns encourage it, and many towns, you know, many towns want to get a sense of what you're bringing in, you know.
Yeah, it gives them, it's more good for the applicant.
But no, yes and no. I mean, sometimes, quite honestly, you go in with an idea, and the town says, look, you're going to have a very, very difficult time getting this passed.
Okay.
And you're not wasting everybody's time and energy, you know, going through the application and expense. So there's benefits, and obviously, if it's not handled properly, then you can go down a road that you don't want to go down.
I feel like it's, we're underutilizing this process.
I absolutely agree.
You know, we regularly go till 10:30. A lot of times, finding holes in plans that we could have found through this subcommittee and, you know, had excellent informal conversations from, you know, not, you know, face to face, I agree, but like with the applicant saying, hey, you know, there's, we see some problems here, come back with them. Till then, you'll have the easier time.
So.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Maybe we should decide who wants to be on it.
Yes, that's what I was just trying to do.
And then maybe as the group of us can, if we have to do an enclosed session.
Attack.
Talk about the limitations of how this group moves forward.
I agree.
And I would like to continue to serve on this committee.
Okay. Mr. Heineman, would you like to continue?
Yeah, I'll continue if no one else wants to jump in.
Okay. If so, who else would like to be on this subcommittee?
I would like to be on it.
Mr. Lilly?
Thank you.
It's a good team.
Will we like, do we want to, does anyone else want to join us as a fourth? Before we have a quorum? No? Okay. We have three solid members, so good. Landscape and Environmental Committee, which, again, we should meet on especially major applications such as is before us this evening. I would like to stay on that committee. Mr. Freski would like to continue on that committee. We obviously lost a couple of people. Would anybody else like to smell the flowers?
I'd like to tree hug, as you know. And actually, that's a good place to.
Anyone else?
Hug trees.
And last but not least, we have the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which would be relatively dormant moving into the next few years. Okay. But the members that were on it were myself and Mr. Camudi, as well as Mr. Messara. We lost Mr. Long again. We lost Al Diol. We have Al Diol. Do you want to stay on that?
Yeah.
Stay on that?
When something comes up, we'll deal with it.
So right now, we have myself.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to join that.
Yes, I'd like to join as well.
Oh, well.
We have one more.
Can't, yeah, we.
Armless.
I'm putting Heineman on.
I mean, I'll defer. I'm on the subcommittee, Chris. I don't know if you want to jump on.
You're, we have Tim on two, I wish you're able, you're on the.
I'm on the site plan.
Well, we really didn't.
Yeah, I'm happy to give someone else a slide. Yeah, I did my work. I moved to the architecture, so.
Okay, so Mr. Bernardo, Mr. Heineman.
I get my great ideas from others. Thank you.
Dr. Diol. And myself. So Chris Bernardo. Okay. So just to review really quickly, the Architectural Committee is going to be Councilman Roman, Mr. Camudi, and myself. The Site Plan Review Committee is going to be Councilman McAvoy, Mr. Heineman, and Mr. Lilly. Landscape, myself, Mr. Freski, and Tim. And Master Plan, Al Diol, myself, Mr. Heineman, Mr. Bernardo, and Mr. Messara. Good? All right. Moving on to the next item, and I think it's going to be brief. If you recall, a couple of years ago, in 2021, we adopted the Open Space and Recreation Plan as part of, as one of the elements of our master plan. Upon adopting our new master plan in 2022, we made a little snafu, little mistake. We did not re-adopt it to the new master plan. This is a corrective measure and a step that we're taking this evening to simply fill that, fix that problem. Beyond which, there are a couple of things coming up in Verona where the Green Acres thing is still kind of hanging out there. We are still dealing with some of the open issues on the two properties that we, two open space properties that we acquired, and there will be a referendum or a proposition going out this fall on raising the open space money from two cents to three. Not sure if you knew about that, but it'll be on the November ballot for all residents of Verona, for the open, for the Open Space Trust Fund. Any comments?
Yeah, I had a question, and it might be for Greg. In terms of the need to re-adopt, I mean, it's not invalidated by us adopting the other land use elements.
No, it was simply not incorporated into.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still valid at the same place.
Right.
So.
So this is in effect the public hearing. We had a notice for the public hearing. There's no changes, and it certainly has changes in what this board approved in 2021. It simply wasn't carried over into the new master plan just by omission.
But I mean, it's still, it's still in place. It's still valid, and I think.
It is.
Technically, it's still, we could still rely on it.
We're simply incorporating it into the 2022 master plan.
Just an administrative.
That's a question that has not been asked, and we hope that it's not, that it doesn't have to be resolved because no issue has come, and that's what we're just trying to, we're trying to do it, you know, non pro talk, if you will, as if we did it in the beginning, you know, as it is now. That's the purpose of this resolution. Just to say, it was incorporated, it was intended to be incorporated, but it was not.
Just because, you know, there are those open issues with the Green Acres, and when we first adopted it, it was kind of a rush process. We didn't get the input from some of the other committees on what we want to do, and it would be nice to be able to amend it.
We could always amend it.
We could go back and do that at some point?
I'm just saying, if the process is open right now, it would be a good time, but we'd have to re-notice anyway, right?
To amend it.
To amend it. So I'm just, I think it should be something that's on our radar.
We could go back and look at.
Once we get the funding squared away and we have a better idea of what projects are feasible, I think we should take a look at opening this back up and kind of filling in some of those blanks that were left a couple of years ago.
I fully agree, but I'd like to just sew up the void right now.
The Master Plan Subcommittee could meet on and discuss and bring.
That's correct. We, they could. At any rate, right now, we're looking to simply tie it back to the 2022 master plan as it was tied to the 2009. So that is what this resolution states. And basically, it states that the Verona 2022 master plan be amended to include the Open Space and Recreation Plan as adopted by us, the Verona Planning Board, in 2021, and as amended on July 27, 2023. And that this open space, space pan, pah, open space plan become a permanent part of it thereof. So can I please, can I get a motion to move this resolution forward to amend the master plan by adding this as an amendment?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is that Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
And second by Doc? Second by Al Diol? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Right, I abstained because I wasn't here for the original.
No, you can vote back.
Yeah.
Mr. Bernardo?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Heineman?
Yes.
Mr. Camudi?
I'm going to abstain because I honestly don't remember the document, and I don't think my, I want to vote one way or the other.
I sent it to you, but you know.
Yeah, I know. So I didn't think, so I'm not, I'm not abstaining.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Diol?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Councilman Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
And Chairperson Pearson?
Yes. Motion passes. And that's it. Okay. At this time, we are going to hand the mic over to Mr. Anglino to continue from our special meeting on June 7th, application 202204 preliminary and final site plan for One Sunset Avenue, Block 303, Lot 1.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Great to be back with you here. For the record, John Anglino here on behalf of the applicant, Verona Sunset Urban Renewal LLC. First, congratulations to new board members on their appointments. Congratulations, or maybe condolences to the volunteers who are being reappointed. Congratulations to you, Madam Chair, on your reappointment. This evening, we're going to present some very limited testimony from Mr. Savage, our civil engineer. And when that is done, I think we've, we'll have kind of wrapped up our case. Mr. Savage's office has been working with your board engineer to address some concerns regarding geotechnical conditions proposed by all detention rebasings, stormwater flow volumes and the like. We'll hear tonight that the applicant is proposing to address these concerns in a revised stormwater management report, which will be submitted as part of the resolution compliance and review, an approval by the board engineer.
Mr. Anglino? I don't want to interrupt, but I guess I'm going to. We asked, and Mr. Savage, many times in the past couple of meetings, had stated that he will revise numbers and show us those numbers. So I would like to be sent a revised vision, as the entire board deserves, and I believe that it was written into the Boswell memo that you received on the 25th, that I sent to you, that the board is supposed to receive a revised final stormwater management plan. That is what we discussed. It was said that it would get done, and we're still not in receipt of that document with the numbers from the, many of the numbers that were cited in Boswell's memo that were supposed to be revised, we have not received that. Is there a reason why we're not getting a copy of that?
So if I may continue, Madam Chair? If I, it's your meeting, if I'm not allowed to make my opening.
It's just that we can't close your testimony until we're sure that the board, who hasn't had a chance to review a new stormwater management report, have questions for your engineer on that particular report. So I appreciate that you want to get done, but this is something that the board has oversight on, and we're not being given an ample review of a final document. So I object to your statement that you're going to simply send it in to Boswell and basically circumvent the board who gives the approval on that. We would like the opportunity to be able to ask your experts questions and rely on our expert to answer those questions in a public forum. And the public may have questions.
Right, so if I may continue. Thank you. As I think you'll hear from Mr. Savage, the report notes that due to rainfall events, when the geotechnical studies were performed, the applicant encountered perched water condition in the areas where the underground detention basins are proposed. We're confident that this water condition is not true groundwater, but simply rainwater that was perched atop the ground, which characterizes the site. that was perched atop the ground, which characterizes the site. However, to establish this, the agreement, the applicant will agree to perform new test pits at the locations proposed basins A and B in the January through April time period as recommended by the board engineer. And once that analysis is complete, the applicant will submit those test results to the board engineer as part of its revised stormwater management report. We believe that those test results will confirm that our proposed basins' locations are appropriate and maintain the adequate two-foot separation from groundwater as recommended in the BMP manual. If it does confirm that, then we satisfy the condition. If we can't confirm that, then we would have to come back to the board for an amended site plan approval. We propose that this be made a condition of approval. And again, if the test results confirm that the basins are appropriately legally located, then we submit that Mr. Alvaro should administratively approve this. Again, if we have to modify in a material way, we're going to have to come back to the board. We understand that. That's the way it works. We're also willing to revise our stormwater management report to address Mr. Alvaro's comment regarding bio detention, bio detention basin C, and to provide an explanation in that report, in that report regarding post-development volume flows. And I think that addresses, or will address, most of the comments. You know, a couple of items here that are really not engineering, they're more process and legal with regard to Mr. Alvaro's report, most recent report, I think it was June 25th or 6th. He's requested that the applicant assess the adequacy of Verona's existing sanitary sewer capacity to handle the addition.
Are you going, I'm sorry, are you going, simply going through Boswell's memo right now?
No, as I said, I'm, right now, addressing in my opening statement, if I may, I think I have a right to do that.
It sounds like you're doing it.
If that's a problem, or if there's an objection, I'd appreciate it if you could make that clear on the record. If not, I'd.
I'm not connecting to it, I just sort of was trying to figure out where you were, and it appears that you're going through this right now.
So I am addressing the portion of the memo that assesses the adequacy of, or has requested the applicant to assess the adequacy of Verona's existing sanitary sewer capacity to handle the additional wastewater flow generated by this community. Of course, this is really not within the purview of the board. This request will necessarily and must be addressed in a future TWA application where, as a matter of law, the board, the town engineer must sign off and certify for conveyance capacity and treatment capacity of, of the system. And that's for the town engineer to do, it's not for this board to assess. That's standard operating procedure in land use. The applicant has been working with the township engineer on this issue, and if need be, will install flow meters downstream from the project, so we will agree as a condition to, of approval to work with the town engineer and abide by whatever reasonable request he has of the applicant, or she has of the applicant, in regards to that issue. The applicant has already camered some of the downstream lines, and so we don't believe that any capacity issue exists. But again, that will be determined by the municipal engineer, who must certify in the TWA application with regard to capacity, both with respect to conveyance and treatment. So that is technically an outside approval for, and would be a condition of approval as it is in all applications. With regard to water, which was also addressed in Mr. Alvaro's letter, he's inquired as to whether the project's water demand and whether the township has adequate capacity to supply that demand. Now, as the board, I think, is aware, the township's, I guess, has a well offline, and the township is temporarily purchasing water, as I understand it, from Passaic Valley until the wells are back online. And to address this temporary issue, again, this is a township issue, it's not a board issue, but it was raised by the board engineer, so we want to address it. We sent a letter to the township about a month or so ago. We sent a copy over to the board engineer today, just so you have it for reference, essentially, you know, requesting a status of that, and if Verona doesn't have water for the project, then Verona's going to have to purchase water for the project, especially since it represented in the settlement agreement that the project, that it can handle the project, so.
Mr. Anglino, that was before those two wells were taken offline.
If, if I may, I'm almost done with my statement, Madam Chair. Again, that is not an issue for this board, that is an issue between the applicant and the municipality. It's not an issue that the board has any jurisdiction or control over whatsoever. I only address it because it was raised in the board engineer's letter. If it wasn't raised in the letter, I would not have raised it with, with the board. So I think that that concludes, Madam Chair, my opening statement. Again, we have Mr. Savage here, who will address the bio detention issues that are raised in Boswell's letter of July 25th. And so without any further ado, I would like to call Mr. Savage. Mr. Savage, you have appeared in these hearings before, is that correct?
Correct.
And you understand that you're still under oath?
I do.
Has there been any change at all to your professional status, your licenses, or any of the qualifications that you provided to the board when you first testified in this application?
No.
Okay. Having said that, Mr. Savage, would you kindly address the issues that are raised in the July 25, 2023 review memo by Boswell engineer?
Okay. So the, the first comment here was regarding the geotechnical report and the bio retention basin memo that we had submitted most recently on the, the early July, I think it was the 6th. And so this statement here, you know, we had provided an argument that the site conditions, you know, based upon our geologist looking at this in a little more detail, that, that the seasonal high and groundwater indications in the original geotech report were actually indications, or were actually the result of a perched water table situation. And the comment here from Boswell, you know, basically kind of stated, you know, some of this, you know, that, that it makes sense, but, but please provide basically additional tests to be done during what would be the high water period of the year, January through April, in order to, I guess, verify that fact. So, you know, we're in agreement to conduct those additional tests. I'll have to, you know, discuss with Mr. Alvaro the sort of, just to confirm the number and that kind of situation, just to make sure that when we go out there, we're getting the, the number and locations, you know, obviously the locations would be in those two basin areas, but just to make sure before we mobilize, we would be, you know, in agreement on the extent of that. And, and then, you know, as previously mentioned, the results of that test, obviously that would be started in January, so we're, however many, six months or however months away we are from that. You know, it's our intention, you know, if those tests come back, let's say they come back negative in terms of our seminal, and they, and they show that that was actually a true groundwater, you know, that would lead to a, a change within the stormwater design, so we'd be back before the town and the board at that situation. If the results come back and, and verify our conclusions that it's perched water table, the design as it is now would be appropriate and meet the regulations, and in our mind, would not need to come back for the board because it's, it'd be complying in that situation.
Mr. Savage, in your opinion, if the results come back that the seasonal high water table is where it's visually been seen through the modeled soil in your past test pits, would that also potentially entail redesigning of portions of the site in order to accommodate a higher placement for those basins?
I don't, I mean, it could be a relocation of the basin, so I, I'm not sure if that would impact the building per se. It could be something that we could relocate that outside of the footprint of the building. The, the one that would be the biggest impact potential obviously is the one in the garage.
Yes.
And so, but potentially that could be moved out or split up into multiple smaller basins outside the footprint. So at this stage, certainly, if that were the result, there could, you know, there would be a change to the drainage design, but I, I can't say that that would impact the building or the layout in the sense of that part of the site plan. All right. The next comment here in the letter was regarding the bio retention basin. We had provided a memo explaining our drain time calculations of the basin and how it, you know, complies with the DEP's BMP manual. And in that memo, we mentioned that the current basin, if, again, this wouldn't be required based on the, the perched water table, but it's such a minor change, we, I think we would just make the change anyway to the basin bottom, raising it, I think it's a couple inches, that would get it to be compliant with even the worst case of the seasonal high, so.
So do you have that? Redesigned basin C?
No, we've, we've run it preliminarily, we were waiting to, to incorporate these other changes in design. It's, it's a, it was a two-inch rise in the bottom, and it doesn't, doesn't impact really the design of that basin. And in effect, it really would not be required if the results of the new testing that's coming up shows that the groundwater and seasonal high are as deep as we feel it is, that wouldn't even be required. But again, it's such a minor change, we'll just, we'll just make that change. Next one is under additional pending comments for stormwater. This has to do with providing a revi, shall revise and provide a new report explanation about the post-development flow volume values in the latest stormwater report as they're equal to the flow volume values in the previous version of the report, despite the fact that the peak flow values have increased. But I think I touched on this at the last hearing, or the last hearing of that. We did change from the, the hydrograph from the, from the Delmarva to the standard, that impacted existing and proposed, and, and we had previously discussed that it, that change didn't impact the design of the basins. What it does impact is that, you know, the peak, the timing of the peak runoff is changed. The volume underneath the hydrograph curve, or sorry, the area underneath the hydrograph curve remains the same, it's just distributed differently. And that area underneath that graph is the volume, the flow volume, and so it would, in this situation, it would be expected to remain the same. So what we have previously discussed is we'll add into the report some explanation of that, but what's in the report that was previously submitted is correct and shows that result. And so we'll, we'll just provide some additional explanation as requested. The next one.
So we'll get that in what, six, eight months?
No, I mean, it, it depends on what our, the, the plan was initially to, to revise these things once we get past the hearing to submit, and that was before I had, we had seen the comments about the testing in January, February. So conceivably, we could do those changes, you know, much sooner. Again, it would still be, it's still going to be based upon the assumption that the groundwater and seasonal high is much lower. That report could be revised much sooner and submitted, and then, you know, then we do the results in January, April. So that, that doesn't have to wait that long.
So just so I understand, so what you're saying is that regardless of the model that you use on the, on the volume of stormwater, the, what you're proposing is, is adequate?
Yeah, so, so what happened was that the, with that change from the Delmarva to the, to the unit, the standard hydrograph, the, the timing, so it's like when it hits the peak and how much of the runoff is before or after the peak, right? So, but the, the curve, the area under that curve stays the same, it's just elongated or, or peaks. And so the area underneath the volume, and so our basins were designed really for the same volume, and then when we routed it with the existing conditions, because when you change that hydrograph from the Delmarva, the existing also goes up. So, so in effect, you're, you're, from a design perspective, your allowable discharges are higher also based upon that storm event, that hydrograph. So it, the, the way it all works out in all of that analysis is that the design, the size of the basins, you know, the weirs and orifices, all remained the same, so there was no need to change the size of anything. So really, the, the design intent, let's call it, didn't change. It was really just how it was distributed.
How come it did change on, sorry, how come it did change on one of the tables, but not the others?
Because the, I, hold on.
I know, I'm waiting for you.
So I, I've explained this numerous times during the testimony.
Well, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to explain.
No, I'm just trying to explain, we, we've gone through this a number of times. The, there's, the four drainage analysis is, three of those were meeting the DEP requirement based upon reducing the volume, because we, those areas have less, are producing less volume, and we're also, at no point does our peak flow exceed the existing hydrograph. That's a DEP requirement, that's three of the four. The final one, which is the one you're mentioning, we, we met on percent reductions of the runoff rate, 57.58. So there'd be a difference in those tables. They're not, they're not comparable, those tables are not comparable. Three of them are the same, one's different. They all meet the DEP requirements.
The calculations and that change in the peak, did it, did it squash the, or, or heighten the peak?
The, the, the new, the new one is a, is a, is a sharper, it peaks, it's a higher peak.
So a higher peak, and is it in the?
But it's skinnier.
It's a higher peak, skinnier, is it, is it skewed like earlier?
It's skewed, the, the peak is skewed off of it, it's a, I think it's an earlier, it's an earlier peak versus a later peak, but it's also a flatter, you know, the, the Delmarva had a, had a lower peak and a flatter shape.
Got it.
But the, the area underneath is the same in both.
Does that have any, is there any implications outside of, you know, meeting the laws and standards that, for, you know, what will actually occur at the property?
The, I mean, the design, the, the design, the stormwater, you know, collection and the basins are designed for that storm, so it, it's designed for that timing of the runoff reaching the, the, the systems, and the outlet structures and such are designed for the same thing. So it's, it's cooked into the design.
So whether a lot of water's coming in at once or a little bit?
The calculations are accounting for the timing, it's the, how the timing is reaching the basins, and then how long it's being detained, and then how it's discharging. So it's, it's all, it's, it's incorporated into that.
Wait.
All right, number five, this one said the applicant shall provide, in the report, a section displaying the assessment of the existing stormwater sewer capacity to the, in the extent, sorry, in the context of the 210-100 flow coming out of the site, a table with the values might be provided. So this, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is referring to that separate memo we had provided relative to the flow to the off-site in Sunset Boulevard inlet and pipe. We're going to just incorporate that previously submitted separate document into the report.
Sunset. I'm Ashley, and that's Sunset Avenue. Just in case, I know that, we get memos from you once a week, Mr. Savage, and I'm Jessica, and that's Marcy, and it's Sunset Avenue.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
You said Sunset Boulevard, and I felt like we were going to Broadway together, but.
I really, it's, okay, I.
Okay, you know who we are. Continue, I'm sorry.
Okay, the next one.
So are you going to give Alvaro a chart showing the 210?
I'm going to, we had already provided that chart to him with the calculations, we're going to incorporate that into the drainage report. It was provided as a separate memo and attachments, it'll just be incorporated into the report.
Did I see that? Did the board see it or no?
I believe that was submitted to the full township.
Okay, well.
So you're not providing any new information, you're just repaying.
So you're not providing any new information, you're just repackaging?
I'm repackaging information provided. All right, and then?
I don't recall getting.
Okay, so I, the next one would be under sanitary and drinking water. There's really no comments other than what was already?
Yeah, that's not.
I, I don't think there's anything else to add to those two. So that, that would be it related to the most recent review letter.
If I, if I may, Mr. Musino did not discuss item number eight, what did you, regarding fire flow?
I'm sorry, just regarding?
Fire flow.
Fire flow. Oh, I think that you, you stopped with the discussion of drinking water demand building. Well, I guess that, again, the well is, is out, so we can't really measure that right now. What we can tell you is that, since there isn't water capacity at the moment, we have to wait until there's water capacity for the capacity part of it. If, from a pressure perspective, we need to install pumps, we will do that.
Has the township said that with the wells out of service, it's inappropriate to measure the capacity or reevaluate the capacity right now? Or is that from the applicant's opinion only?
Yeah, I mean, there, there was a, a bullet test prior to the wells being offline, prior to mine involvement project, that from my understanding of those results showed that the volume was adequate, but that there was a, that there would need to be an onsite or in a building pump to supplement the pressure, which the client is, you know, understands and agrees to. So once the wells are back online, obviously the volume would be still there or more. And at that point, they would redo the test to see if the additional wells online have brought up the...
Here's, what, what I'm not understanding is we are, with our wells offline, we are replacing that water capacity through additional surface water purchases from Passaic Valley Water Commission, which is our other water source. Has the township issued an opinion to you that this is, that, that because the wells are offline, we may not be able to meet this demand? Or is this only the applicant's engineer that has this opinion?
Well, I, let me rephrase it. To the extent we can't, to the extent we can't do the test now because of the lack of border, of capacity, then we will when there is capacity. And if we need to install pumps for there to be appropriate pressure, we will do that.
But capacity and pressure are two separate issues. Yes, if there's not pressure, you've already stated that you will install pumps, but the capacity, the capacity analysis is that a test done on the water system to determine if the, if the capacity, if the ability to supply gallons per minute is, all right, that's what I'm trying to, what I'm not understanding here from the...
The, if you're talking about, you know, the flow calculations for the, for the sprinkler systems, so those are done by an MEP engineer and/or a sprinkler person, so I, I wouldn't calculate those in terms of that. But, you know, at, at this point, it's the opinion that, that, you know, there's really no need to do it. They understand that there isn't a capacity, that there isn't capacity for the project at this time. So there's really, they're not looking to, to speed that part of it up. They understand they have to wait at this point.
Who has rendered that opinion that there is not sufficient capacity at this time?
Well, we, we are working under that assumption. I, I don't know whether there, there is or isn't capacity at the moment. What I do know is Verona is obligated to provide the capacity. And it's not, that's not our obligation, that's the township's obligation to provide us with sufficient capacity of water. So that's, that's not within our control. What is within our control is to, you know, take action in terms of installation of pumps to ensure adequacy of pressure if, if there isn't adequacy of pressure. This is up on a high, you know, piece of ground. So as was testified to by the engineer, I guess preliminary test that we performed back when revealed that we may have to install pumps, and if we do, we will do that.
Okay. But is the determination of adequate capacity, is this based on testing of a system, or is this based on calculations, based on pipe sizing, knowledge of our water supply, et cetera?
And if I can just, my understanding from, and again, I wasn't involved in this aspect, but my understanding is that the, the DEP has, I guess, issued a, a report or, or a decision that the, that the township has a, doesn't have enough capacity. So in effect, like, we, we would not, a new development would not be able to apply for a, a water main extension until those wells are back online. So again, we can't move forward, let's say, with submission to the, obviously we've got to go before the town and stuff first, but to the DEP for that water main extension, because from that requirement, the town is negative, as far as my understanding is, already purchasing water from other sources, I believe.
Yeah, they're, they're purchasing from Passaic Valley. We, we don't know, I, I don't know. We know whether or not, at the moment, there is sufficient capacity. I think we've raised the issue with the township, it's not a board issue, it's a municipal issue. Again, that letter was sent to the business administrator over a month ago. We have not received a reply. You know, my office did call there and we were told they're working on it, but we haven't received any information from the town in regards to what it's doing to provide water capacity for the project. But that, that's a municipal obligation, it's not something that we control.
Okay. I'm just still trying to figure out this phrase here, the, the township's water system capacity to supply the demand shall be assessed slash determined. What is that assessment or determination based upon? How is that assessment or determination made? Is this someone looking at paperwork and design of the water supply system? Or is this someone going and running some sort of field testing to determine the adequacy of the as-built system? What makes, what is involved in making that determination of adequate water capacity?
I, I believe what, what we were testifying to, I think that responsibility would lie with the town.
No, no, but the mayor, the mayor, I'm sorry, the, you're still mayor because your tag still says mayor, your nameplate says mayor.
You're still, New Jersey wants a mayor, always a mayor.
That's what I always say, mayor.
Hold on, whatever you like.
What, what, I think the issue is that the mayor is asking, is that from a municipal capacity, how is that measured? And there's, there's a concept of firm capacity in which, you know, it, it's DEP permitting, maybe Mr. Alvaro knows or can, can speak to that. I, I think that our engineer is certainly a civil engineer here testifying to our project. If you feel that you're knowledgeable enough to testify as to municipal water systems and generally and how that works, I think the mayor is just wanting some information to that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know the, the specifics of that analysis. I mean, I do know that when we're typically going through the, the water extension permits, we're submitting to the, to the township or a water company and we're, they're providing the firm capacity. So they're providing us the calculations of the wells or other sources of water that they have, and they're coming up with that flow. And, you know, if you're talking about a, an analysis of the conveyance system, let's call it, of the water, I mean, that's a different thing.
That is not what this is, okay. So what I'm trying to figure out, the question I'm trying to answer here is, I am hearing this analysis cannot be performed now because the wells are offline, okay? So that, to me, would only hold true if this was a function of measurement. If you were to go out and, and run a field test, go try and get the water you needed and it didn't run. I'm wondering why there can't essentially be a co-formal analysis, assuming that the wells go back online?
Yeah, I would, I mean, there, there could be assumptions about what the, what the flow, what, what those wells were, were...
Delivering.
Delivering, but the, hold on a second, sorry. We could, we could look at that as, as, as assumptions to, to the flow, but what we were specifically referring to holding off on was actually the fire, the hydrant flow test.
Okay.
Which, which was, was the specific thing we were talking about, waiting till the wells are back online.
Okay. And again, you know, you, you not being our water system engineer, but just asking if you, if you know any of these answers here. Fire demand, this is a function, this is, again, we're going back to both pressure and volume.
Volume.
Okay. Pressure, you've already said if you need a booster pump, you're gonna put a booster pump in. Volume, has somebody rendered an opinion that right now with the wells offline, the township cannot supply sufficient volume to make your fire flow numbers?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Right.
The, the only thing was that what I had mentioned previously, that the DEP mentioned that there is not available water for the development at this time.
Former mayor hat for a minute and municipal attorney hat. The question of whether or not there's enough water is a bit of a misnomer, because the DEP has this concept called firm capacity. You may have plenty of water to service the needs, but if you don't have enough water on paper, and I think it's like one-third more than your act, or no, it's three times more than your actual need, three times more than your actual need, then you don't have enough water on paper to get, to, to deliver that water to your, to your residents. And so my, from what I understand, and my sense is Verona has enough water, but it doesn't have enough firm capacity or reserve in order for DEP to, to permit you to service some of your properties. And so, and that is a result of your well being offline. And so Verona has attempted to mitigate that problem by entering into an agreement with Passaic Valley to purchase additional water, which I guess it can through the existing conveyance system. And so what we have asked the municipality to do is, is to purchase, if they need to up their amount of purchase in water to do that, but again, we just haven't received a response. But my fallback answer, our fallback answer would be that it is the municipality's obligation and responsibility to provide sufficient water gallonage. That's not up to us. We're, we rely on the municipality like every other property owner does in, in Verona. I don't think there's any well water in Verona, it's all...
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, it's all township water. So, so that's our view, we don't control that.
Okay, that gets back, all right, that comes closer to answering my question. So this is a regulatory problem in that the people who would certify that there is adequate water demand will not do so with the wells offline or without additional?
That's correct.
Okay.
The problem is you don't have enough firm capacity to meet your permitting requirements for additional water extension permits.
And, and to clarify, I will not, neither, you know, neither agree nor disagree with your statement regarding the township providing adequate water capacity, that would be a separate matter and subject to interpretation by township legal counsel.
Alvaro, do you want to add something?
Yes, sir. With due respect to our board engineer, it's Alvaro Gonzalez, it's not Mr. Alvaro, I think we're all guilty, and it's Dr. Gonzalez.
Apologies, Dr. Gonzalez.
I think, you know, it's a degree, and I know no one meant any disrespect, but even members of the board of Mr. Alvaro, it's Mr. Alvaro, Alvaro or Alvaro, I don't know how to pronounce your first name. Alvaro Gonzalez, but it's, it's, the last name is Gonzalez and it's Dr. Gonzalez. So, thank you.
That's easier. Apologies, Dr. Gonzalez. I butchered your name, but I can assure you that my name's been butchered several times during the year or two.
I'll call you Mr. John.
No, there's been a lot worse than that, I can tell you that.
I'll ask our board attorney then, with respect to, if the township has a different interpretation of the agreement regarding its responsibilities there, at what point in time does that weigh in? Or who ultimately says whose responsibility that is?
Responsibility for?
For being able to supply adequate water capacity to the development.
That's, it's, it's not within the purview of this board, it's not a condition of approval. There's an argument, I think what, what council has said I generally agree with, that the town has the obligation to provide the, the infrastructure, the elements of the infrastructure, which would include providing, you know, sewer capacity, water, et cetera. There are some conditions on that depending on the site, but, you know, I think it's a case-by-case basis, but primarily the, the town, municipality has the obligation to provide what is necessary to complete these projects, especially, there's specific cases, especially in the affordable housing context, because that's where a lot of these capacity issues have arisen, because the density has been so great, the towns have taken a position that they don't have the ability to provide the necessary services, and the courts generally have said, well, you better, you better figure it out to the towns.
Okay. Again, just for the, just for the record, I will state that also may be subject to the particulars of the agreement between the...
Oh, absolutely, that's why I said it's not this board's, right, it's not the purview of this board. It certainly would be part of the permitting process and, and part of the, part of the completion process, and as Mr. Savage said, the DEP also has a say, you know, so.
But one of the things that you said kind of stuck me, struck me wrong, and that was providing the infrastructure. I don't agree with that because they're building the pipes that will carry their own water.
Go argue to the New Jersey Supreme Court.
I mean, so we build your sewer system, we build your pipes, even though the capacity may not be ample? Didn't we have this discussion not too long ago?
I can tell you, like...
Where you did not agree with Mr. Ring.
No, 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 that was, that was with regard to the sewer, specifically whether there is the sewer capacity. And there are situations where if it's, if it's specifically related to that project, but not the overall capacity of the town, then they might be responsible. But if the town, I can tell you this now, the borough of Caldwell is going through lawsuits with Essex Falls, Roseland, North Caldwell, et cetera, because their sewer plant does not have the capacity. And there are builders running these lawsuits in Roseland, significant number, that are now in Superior Court, because Caldwell doesn't have the ability to expand the plant, but Caldwell has to expand the plant because they must serve the people who they serve. So...
Unfortunately, we were conflicted out participating in this.
I'm sorry you're in that?
Well, we were conflicted out unfortunately, participating.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yes. But yeah, no, listen, I, I think that I, I agree with, with Mr. Musino.
But there are situations, as I said, there are situations where if the specific project might impact a specific area of the public accommodation, not accommodation, but the public service, then the, then you might be able to put it on the applicant. For instance, let's suppose like just on Sunset Avenue, there wasn't the capacity, but just on Sunset, and then it tied into eight-inch diameter lines instead of four. Then you might be able to say, hey, that's your last problem, because in general terms, we can serve what is there, the single-family homes, et cetera. We have no obligation.
I agree with that, I just don't think that Mr. Ringo does.
No, no, so the municipal land use law, and I believe it's 4055D-42, outlines where boards can impose obligate, look it up, Greg, I think it's 4055D-42, which deals with this very issue. And it's a, it's, it's very limited in its scope. And that's, you know, that's been the law in New Jersey, you know, for a long time, I was looking it up back in the nineties, back in my day, when I was mayor, there was impact fee legislation that, that just didn't make it. There's been cases before the New Jersey State Supreme Court where boards attempted to impose impact fees for impacts on schools, and that's all been shot down.
What you're referring, 42 refers to whether you can, well, correct, whether you can impose a, a fee on a developer for the cost of the improvements.
Right.
In general, you know, litigation with that have to do kind of the opposite, of whether the boards have imposed a quick front quote, like if you, if you're imposing, then we will give you, if you pay, we give you approval. There's gotta be an ordinance and there has to be a reasonable estimation of the amount of cost. But you can do that, but again, it has to be project-specific and not having to do with the overall capacity of the town. Like the Caldwell example is a great example. The sewer is a hundred percent capacity, so they can't, they, they cannot take on anything then. So that's an easy one. If you go, if you go from zero to a hundred, that's a hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, this one might be somewhere on the line, on, on the line between zero and a hundred, might be at fifty, like, hey, do we have the right to oppose? Well, it depends on all the conditions.
Alvaro, do you want to?
Oh, yeah, yeah, regarding that, yeah, I had access to, access to the document that you're talking about. And it's true that the firm capacity is not, is not enough. But what you can be doing is, because I, I got these numbers that I just pulled up from the document, it's like, that you tentatively estimated, I don't know who did it, but probably your, your consultant, that the five-flow demand was forty-five... your, your consultant, that the five flow demand was 45,000 something, which is something about 31.5 GPM, gallons per minute. So what you can be doing, we, I mean, regardless of that, the, you have the issue of the firm capacity to solve your, the need, you, I mean, your water demand, what you can be doing, I don't know, probably you already run a hydrant test. So basically, a hydrant test, what, what it does is that you run certain flow through the hydrant, and then you measure the pressure. So you get something that is called a static pressure, and the other one is the residual pressure, and then with a formula, you calculate what would be the available flow at 20 PSI. Why 20 PSI? Because the, the regulation mandates that you have to provide 20 PSI at a minimum at any scenario, including the five flow. So I don't know if you already have your hydrant test.
Mentioned before, there, there was one done prior, that was done before the wells are offline, and what we had mentioned earlier was that we're waiting to do the next one until those wells are back online.
So you can probably have an idea, as you just mentioned, that probably you might need probably pressure, and then you, you put just a booster pump.
Well, and that, that was already, as we mentioned just a little bit ago, the client is already aware that, that they, that they, most likely unless the wells come back online and provide the pressure, based on the current hydrant test that they did before the wells were offline, they already did that calculation, and they, that, but those calculations would need the booster pump, and they understand that, and if that's what they need, they're, they're gonna obviously have to provide that.
Yeah, that's something that you can be doing.
Well, that was already done. In preparation for the next step.
Question for both engineers really, on the pump and the, not the capacity, but the pressure, the top of the hill. It sounds like if your pressure's inadequate for your property, you'll put in pumps, those will take care of, you know, the, the, the building's needs. Is there an effect on, you know, that pressure right before those pumps and, and the area? If those pumps are needed and that water is, you know, the capacity is given to them, will that reduce capacity or pressure to the surrounding neighborhood?
I, look, we're, we're gonna do whatever the town engineer advises us to do in that regard. I, I, I mean, I don't know how we can answer that, but that's a.
Mayor, I asked the engineers, but yeah.
Yeah, no, no, the, the municipal engineer will provide the guy.
Do you have any, and you know, what's your, just, just from a physics point of view, does, is that affected when, you know, the capacity and the pressure at the pipe?
Somehow you set up your, your, your new what I'm called network, so you can just, what it does is, the booster pump is, it works like a fan, like, you know, just get flow of air and just push it that faster and then move on. So actually, it may improve the, the well pressure.
He helped you out, Mayor?
In my, in the end, not in my.
Understand. And I assume to your point, you'll work that out. Absolutely.
So at this point, I'll ask the two former mayors. I don't even know what to call anyone anymore.
I think there's three of us.
Just crazy, right? When that well, when will at least one of those wells, when is it expected to go back up online? Not for another year, right?
At least a year off.
At least a year off from one of the two wells being remediated. And, because there's a, another well that has a grain acres issue, because it's located on grain acres. So just out of curiosity, how do, how do you build when you don't know what you need?
Well, towns get to purchase more water, because they don't have.
I'm sorry?
They, they can purchase more water. I mean, that's, that's what they've done. They've entered into an agreement with Passaic Valley, so they're gonna have.
Well, or, really, I was referring in a sense as well to the pressure. How do you know how to build if you don't know, you're not doing another test until the well comes back online, which is.
Well, we, we didn't.
At, at least a year from now.
I don't think we said that. I think we said that we'll, we'll do the test when we can, and obviously, we'll have to do the test if, if we want to get our permitting.
What, what comes first, chicken or egg? Do you build and then figure it out?
Well, we're not gonna get a building permit.
They have to prove that they have the adequate pressure.
Okay.
In order to build what, you know, as, as a precondition to build, like, that it's one of the prerequisites.
Yeah, it's a problem.
Chair, can I ask another question, actually going back to number one? On the soil samples, I just want to understand in the simplest terms, tell me if I'm right, that you took samples on really a very, very wet day, so you feel like your samples are outliers, is that correct?
No, that, that was just part of the, of, of the explanation for it to show, you know, what could be a, a cause of that water at that time. What, what the analysis also talked about with the geologist was just that surrounding area, so the, like the nearest, like say where water is reaching the surface in this area is, is, I forget the distance away from here, and it's, it's probably like 80 feet low, or it was something dramatic. And so that's what the geologist is looking at. He's looking at, okay, you know, that, where the water is breaking out is, is, is a good indication of what your general water table would be in that area, then he also knows the, the, you know, the rock formations of this area. The fact that the site is, is, is rock after that initial overburden would lead to that indication that, you know, you're, you're various depths, but it's relatively shallow overburden beyond the rock. Once you're into the rock, you know, you're not getting the water table, so you're not getting the water coming up through that, that, those, those, you know, feet on feet of rock. And so, and so what, what, what the conclusion on the, with our geologists and looking at the rainfall events is basically that was just to show, hey, right before or, or enduring the testing that was done, there was relatively a, a, a good amount of rainfall, a shallow amount of overburden, and so the fact that that could become perched would, would be expected that you would potentially find that. The fact that they found modeling, which is soil staining, would just be indicative that over the course of X number of years, what you would expect is you're having water get perched above that rock and, and dry out, and it goes to level, then it dries out, and, and so you're getting a staining, but the source of that water is rain, where the source of a true groundwater is coming up, is, is sort of the difference at that.
And so the retest is just to prove that?
What, what the retest would, would, would be looking at is, is going, we would basically, and, and in this situation, we would have to do a boring through the rock. To get down to, you know, beneath the big basins, the heart of one, the basin alley and the garage, to get down underneath that and, and look at the water of, if there is water or not water during that, the January to April, which is a high watermark of the, of a year. And so that's what that purpose of that test would be.
So you're, you're, okay, so now I understand a lot better, and let me reconsider. Your October samples, you're not like, oh, these are kind of outliers because we had rain recently, that what you've described is the natural occurrence of, say, that rain and that recent rain.
Just in that top layer, layers or whatever.
And for certainty, you're going farther.
The new test would go, a, a lot of the original tests were, were, we hit refusal at various depths, relatively shallow in most of them. And so now we would have to go through the rock, so it's gonna have to be a drill through the rock to get down to those depths.
I'm no geologist, but I assume it's the salt all the way down.
Yeah, and so, so that's, that's the, the other test would be having to, to get through that rock, basically.
Which is, in a certain sense, where you said the runoff, that the, that the geologist said is almost like, I don't know if it's exactly a right angle, but here's your top, here's your hill, if the runoff, you said there's 80 feet down or away or something, you're, you're sort of looking to see if that.
Well, I, I mean, well, we're not gonna go, we don't need to go that far, we, we need to go, you know, at, at a minimum, two feet below the bottom of the basin, so.
Got it.
So we don't need to go, we don't have to find groundwater, we just need to show that it is not within a certain distance of the basins.
Which then allows you to, so that's what you're looking for, that's the information?
Correct, we just want to get to at least two feet below those basins, and if we don't hit the groundwater at that point during those high water times, then that's the indication we're looking for.
That, and that you're, you know, you're, you can count on your engineering passing.
Yeah, and then, well, not even that, it's really just, it's, the, the capacities are fine, it's, it's, it's about whether or not the water potentially is within the area where the basin is.
Right.
So that, that would prove. Loaded, or, and the regs have a, have a, have a comment about the two-foot separation on, on basins. So that's what that would prove.
Thank you for taking me through that. I understand much better.
But just as a, a point, our engineers attached the average rainfall during the seasonal high water table period, at which point you're going to have to reperform these tests, and the average rainfall exceeds what happens a day or two before you did your testing in October. So I'm just saying, you know, in general, you get more rain during this, the period that you're being asked to test, so, you know, if you're gonna blame it on a, a rainstorm, you're gonna get more rain.
Again, I wasn't blaming, I was just, it was an explanation of what would cause perched water table was why we presented the rainfall. If it had been dried, let's say, you know, you have three feet of overburden there, and it had been dried for two months before we did those tests, then we wouldn't have expected to find any groundwater. So that, that, that discussion in the report was just to.
Any perched water.
Any perched water. So that was just to sort of explain why there would be water, why you, why we found water there is basically what that was for.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Savage, in what you just described, you said you went down, your next tests are gonna go deeper?
Yeah, so.
So why, why wouldn't they have just done that before?
They, they hit refusal, so the equipment they were using for those test pits was a, was a, you know, an excavator, they hit refusal, meaning they could not get through the rock. So they, they would have to advance those with a boring. To get down to the depth of the, of the large basin, you know, with the cut to put the building in, it's, it's over 20 feet down, I think it's maybe close to 20, it's, it's too deep for that type of equipment, so it would be a boring in that situation. The, the small basin out front is sort of getting to the limit of where we would use a, an excavator, that's about 12 feet down to get to where we need to. But again, we hit, on the previous test, we were hitting refusal.
Now, where that garage is going and the basin is going, is that open right now or is it below the school?
No, we, we had tests in the footprint of that basin, so it's, I think it's in the parking lot, I forget where it falls, but it's not, it's not in the building. We had done previous tests in those locations, we just didn't with different equipment. So the act, we can get to.
It just seems like knowing that, why wouldn't they have done the boring tests already to the bottom plus two feet of the basin?
I mean, this, the, the original design, we were, we were utilizing, we were not, in previous discussions with the, the previous board engineer, the design, the basins that are underground there are sealed basins, and so the intention was that the, the, if there was a seasonal high that was coming up towards those basins, it would not interfere with the design of those basins, or the function, I should say, of the basins, and that it would be really more of a matter of whether or not we had to compensate for buoyancy. So the test, the, the equipment they had at the time they did those tests was, was, was equipment that was, they were not there drilling, they were doing test pits, so they were excavating tests. So it was just different equipment, and then moving on from there, until, I forget when it, the, the newer comments first came up, the, the review letters, but, but we didn't have those initial comments from, you know, a long time ago, there, I forget when your first letter that mentioned that was, but, you know, but it hasn't been the whole process, I should say.
Okay.
Just going back to your response to Boswell's June, June 6th letter or whatever, I, I'm just, regarding Matrix will revise the bio retention basin design, Matrix will revise the stormwater management report to include, the bottom line is this, right now, you're, you're floating, no pun intended here, the numbers that you're going to retrieve from new drilling tests, as, that's when we're gonna redo our stormwater management plan. Right now, you've, you, you guys have to redo whatever changes based on the test pit numbers that you have currently, and that has to be submitted for this board and our engineers' approval, with the obvious condition that if those test pit numbers change the results, then everything has to get redone on that. I mean, you, Mr. Ringginsina, you keep saying that we're going to hand in the stormwater management report when we get the new numbers, like in six, eight months. It's not gonna happen that way, we gotta get that to this board before this board makes any final determination.
You can't do that, strictly, you can't do that, I don't believe, because they can't do the final numbers for six more months.
Nope, they can do the final numbers, but.
No, they have to do more testing, so they don't know, we're requiring.
So what are we approving, Greg? We, we can't approve.
It would be conditioned on, as we do in many instances, it would be conditioned on the engineer approving the final numbers. But the, the idea being they're gonna submit something that, that complies with our engineers' requirements and with all other state regulations.
Yeah, I mean, it's this two-foot separation, I think that's the key, that wrote Dr. Gonzalez, yeah, it's the two-foot separation that is the key, it's a very objective standard. We either comply or we don't. If we comply with the requisite separation, there's no need to come back to the board. If we can't comply with that standard, then obviously, we need to come back to the boards with, with an amended site plan.
So what about Matrix will revise the stormwater management plan to include additional clarification language showing the current stormwater management design does comply with the above referenced NJAC section? In the final sign, blah, 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 you, you just keep saying we're going to, but you don't.
Madam Chair, I just.
That, that's, it's the fact, it's been kicking the can for months.
No, that, that's just not accurate.
It's not accurate.
I'm, I'm getting very frustrated.
Well, we're, we're frustrated because.
You want approval without allowing us to see documentation.
We're very frustrated, we're very frustrated, because you've heard the testimony. The testimony was that we were operating under the prior engineer, I understand there's a change of engineers, this is nothing against Dr. Gonzalez, but we were told, were we not, Mr. Savage, that because the basin was sealed, why don't you talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
We have a different, we have a different guardian right now.
Okay, we, we have had a, we, we have had a completed application now for over a year.
No, no, you handed everything back in on January 11th. You pulled everything at the first meeting, and you didn't hand it back in till January 11th.
Our first hearing on this application was August 25th of last year. We have been nearly a year in hearings, okay? The municipal land use law requires a decision within 120 days, and we understand that a lot of applications go more than 120 days. This is an as-of-right application, okay? This has taken an extraordinarily long time. We proceeded for well over half that time with guidance from a former engineer that we've complied with. We did not receive these letters for all of this new information and tests and so forth, I believe it was May or June of this year, it was very recent, and we are cooperating with this board, and we are cooperating with this board by saying that we will provide the testing that Dr. Gonzalez is requesting. It's an objective standard, there's no mystery here, we either meet the DEP standard of separation or we don't. If we do, that's not something.
Why is it so difficult to give us a relatively more complete stormwater management plan?
The test, the testimony is that other than that, and Mr. Savage will correct me if I'm wrong, that all of the other information has been provided.
Not to, not to us.
The testimony is that it's been provided and that Dr. Gonzalez has asked for it to be repackaged, was the word that Mr. Savage said, and he will do that. Am I correct, Mr. Savage?
Correct.
Okay, when will that happen? When will we be in receipt of this repackaged?
It'll be a condition of approval. We, we've provided, the testimony is that we have provided the substantive. We've provided, the testimony is that we have provided the substantive information. If that's not correct, then we'd like to hear from Dr. Gonzalez as to what substantive information we are missing, and we will provide it.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
That's right. But an issue regarding the...
Wait, you're going to move into that? I think we need to settle this first. We need to settle the discussion on the stormwater management before we move into the wall.
Well, Mr. Savage is available for any other questions relative to the testimony that he provided.
Absolutely. Can we, please?
So, what is missing here is, I mean, you need to redo the bio-retention basin, which is basin C. You're going to erase that a couple of inches. I mean, you don't expect that to change.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah. The part that I want to check is the volume issue. Because we had the same volume despite the fact that we have a different pick, right? So, and the difference in the pick flow was because, as you correctly mentioned, you were utilizing first the Delmarva, which is flatter, and then now you're using the Standard, which has a high pick. So the only way that that holds true, meaning that the two volumes are equal, is if the time of concentration in the previous condition is large. I mean, the time of concentration in the new condition is shorter than the previous one that you estimated with the Delmarva, so they can compensate the area below the graph. So that's what I want to check. So, but I suspect that probably the time of concentration didn't change, probably I'm mistaken. I just want to double-check that and see if that holds true. So, you can, as I was discussing previously, is that you can be doing, you can do two things, either or. So if you're certain of what is, that the test that you're going to be performing in January through April, I don't know which month that you're going to pick for that. You're certain that these results are going to be positive on your side, meaning that you don't need to change your design. You may make the adjustment, run your model again, submit that version, and we'll wait. Right? I mean, that's one option. I'm not saying that that you need to do, so it's one option. The other option is, I don't know if you want to wait, if you're certain about your hypothesis. I don't know if you want to wait until January. I mean, bottom line is that I need to double-check, regardless of the soil tests, I need to double-check that the volumes below the graph are actually the same.
What else do you need to check that?
Was that, yeah. What else do you need to check that?
Greg, I need your help here.
I'm asking a question of the engineer. I'm asking, what do you need from us to check that?
I just told you that, I mean, it's not logical that despite the fact that you have a different pick flow, you're having the same volume. It's because, and the reason is, the only way that that holds true is that the time of concentration that you estimated in the new condition is shorter than in the previous condition, so the two areas, I don't want to go that technical, but probably Mr. Savage know what I'm talking about.
And just to, with the report that was submitted when we revised from Delmarva to Standard, in that is provided, are provided, the hydrograph charts that show that, you know, per the DEP regulations, one, that at no point on those curves does the proposed exceed the existing on that curve. So, per the DEP regs, I mean, we're complying with meeting the volume requirements of the DEP regs. So, I mean, the report as submitted, I think, provides that data. Maybe you want it pulled out in a certain way, but that data is in there.
When was that report provided?
That, I forget when we submitted it.
May 5th?
Yeah, May. So, that revised report, you know, is showing compliance for three of the drainage analysis areas with what the DEP requires. So...
Are you saying that you need additional information to what was...
Yeah, I need to double-check the volume issue. That's all I need to check. Because, I mean, you need to pick the three conditions that the DEP establishes for the compliance in terms of the water quantity is one of three. So, at the beginning, you selected the percentage quantity. Oh, you selected one?
What I explained earlier in previous meetings, and it's in the report, three of, we have four areas, three analyses. We analyze to four different areas, or directions. Three of them are meeting by the volume requirement or allowance in DEP regs. One of them is meeting by percentages. I never have all of them meeting by percentages. They've always been the way they are.
Yeah, that's exactly, because the tables that you provided, actually, it just caught our attention that the volume didn't change despite the fact that the pick flow increased. Yeah, so...
Which, again, you know, that volume is, you know, with the change, and what was submitted in that report is showing that the hydrograph, you know, per the DEP regs, the proposed hydrograph doesn't exceed that existing one at any point. The rate is lower, and the volume remains the same.
But from the point of view of the engineering, I mean, the hydrologic point of view, it doesn't ring a bell, the fact that you're having the same volume despite the fact that you're having a different pick flow.
I think if I can try to express the question it raises in my mind, I think, Mr. Savage, is that you're saying that we meet the DEP regs, so therefore, the case is closed. And I think what Dr. Gonzalez is saying is, I'm not really sure about the regs and whether you meet it, that's fine. But I have to see the numbers so that I can verify for myself that those charts are accurate.
And we're saying that he's had the charts since May 5th?
Well, I mean...
Okay, so, so he's had the charts since May 5th. We've received two review letters since then. This issue was not raised in either one, okay? So, we're concluding our application tonight.
No, no, I'm sorry, but we... Mr. Inglisino, is it or is it not a state law that the planning board shall pass and approve of applications?
I'm not here, I'm not here to... I'm not here to play witness with you, and I'm not here to debate state law with you.
Then you will please provide the board with what we've asked for.
You're not, listen, your expert...
We're not deserving, what? What? We're not what?
He's not asking for additional information. He's asking to go back and review the information that has already been provided, okay? He's had two review letters, he's had this information since May 5th. So, this is unreasonable, this is punitive on the applicant. And, you know, if he has a specific information that he's seeking, he hasn't provided us what it is he's seeking. He's saying he has to go back and review.
Mr. Inglisino.
Yeah, we did raise that issue in the last meeting we had.
Raised what issue?
This one that we were discussing.
So the issue that you have to review?
No, 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 no. The volume being the same despite the fact that the pick flow increased.
So, Mr. Savage has said, we don't have any additional information to provide you.
And we haven't gotten a response.
Dr. Gonzalez, I appreciate that you need to rerun because there's apparent discrepancy in terms of the calculations. But what is it that you need to review? Is it underlying data that they haven't provided? Do they need to provide new calculations to you to check? Or is it something else? Are there assumptions that they have not provided to you that were used in their model? And again, this is getting a little bit more technical than I think anyone in this room, except the two engineers here, can get into. So I just kind of want to reel it back so we can understand what exactly needs to be reviewed and what exactly needs to be provided.
Yeah, during the last meeting, we brought up this issue. And I remember that we discussed that the only way that that might happen is that if the time of concentration in the two scenarios, one was longer and the other one was shorter. And I remember that Mr. Savage said that they were going to explain that in the report. So that this is not a new issue, that was discussed now. The point is that the only way that that may happen is in the scenario that I just told you. And I don't think that the time of concentration that Mr. Savage estimated has changed. So how come that could happen? So, you are aware that during the last meeting, we brought this up. And there's nothing in the report that explains that.
The report was done based on the DEP regulations. It shows that the rate does not increase, it's showing, the volume stays the same. We providing the hydrographs existing proposed that are showing that the existing, that the proposed hydrograph does not exceed the existing at any point.
I think that we're discussing two different issues. I mean, it's, one thing is that if you comply with the regulation or not. And the other thing is that I'm puzzled that, that probably for you is not concerning the fact that you're having the same volume for two hydrographs that probably are different. And if you have the same time of concentration, that's what I'm concerned about.
I mean, you're comparing the volumes from the Delmarva hydrograph to the ones produced under the new report. You know, as we were discussing, that those shapes of those hydrographs are different. The peaks are different, the expansion of, how far those are, the time period over which those occur is different. But the area underneath is, you know, we're not exceeding that.
You said before, the area underneath is exactly the same. Now you're saying we're not exceeding. Is the area underneath exactly the same?
The areas underneath are the volume. So what I was stating is that the area, at no point in that, in those, if you overlay the two hydrographs, at no point does the proposed exceed the existing, but they're different shapes.
Wait, 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 okay.
The areas are the same because the volume's the same.
Or the area is exactly the same under...
The volumes are the same on those results, not just that area underneath.
But the areas are exactly the same?
Yeah, because that's the volume.
Okay. That's what Dr. Gonzalez is questioning because the time of constraint has to be less, so he has not seen proof that those areas are the same. Is that correct?
The report contains that.
Well, the report, to go back before, the report contains graphs that indicate you need DEP approval. Okay, but there's no...
We should discover in the stormwater regulations.
But are there calculations that show the area is the same? I think it's, I think that's, we've narrowed it down to...
I imply the graphs, as I mentioned, with those graphs being overlaid, that's showing that that volume, you know, that's showing what we're meeting the DEP requirements, what's presented in that report.
Okay, I know you're meeting the DEP requirements. Are there calculations that show the area is the same?
The report shows that in the results in that report. I mean, the charts, the hydrographs are in there, are showing that. The data, the results are in there.
I understand, okay.
And we're...
There are calculations that turn into a picture, right? The graph only depicts points on two axes, right? Graphs are points on two axes, correct? Right? You connect the points and then you get these pictures. The points are reached by doing mathematical calculations, okay? Do you have those mathematical calculations that support the graphs?
Those are in, through the design software. Those charts that are showing how those numbers are changing are in that report.
Okay, so your position is that the calculus, the algebra, whatever trigonometry, whatever it is, is reflected on those graphs, and there's no...
And in the tables.
And the tables, okay. Dr. Gonzalez, is that accurate, in your opinion?
In my opinion, it's not, because it actually, it contradicts. Because if you have, this is your, I don't know if you can see from that, this is a previous condition, right? So if you're matching the, one of the regulations that states that you don't need to, you don't have to exceed the, the post-development condition shall not exceed the hydrograph of the pre-existing condition. That's right? That's correct?
And the runoff rate cannot...
Yes, so that means that in the new conditions, under any circumstances, the new condition being the dash, should be something like that, right? But in addition to that, in your table, your pick flow for the pre-existing condition is one value, say 10. But in the same table, you have that the pick flow for the post-development condition is more, is 15, so how come?
The hydrograph is a different shape between those two storms.
So if it is a different shape, so it doesn't match that the hydrograph post, which is the higher one, has to be quote-unquote embedded into the pre-existing condition. That's why it contradicts, that's why, for me, it makes no sense.
Can you address that?
So the only way for that to occur is that the time of concentration is then shortened. So it compensates, because the other one is wider, wider but is flatter, and the other one is shorter, is higher. So, it's a contradiction.
So, I mean, the report that we submitted, maybe I'm just wording it not clearly, but those, you know, the DEP requirement is that the area underneath those curves stays the same. So I think I was confused, or confusing you by the statement that the hydrograph I'm referring to as being underneath one or the other is during the same Delmarva or Standard. So, in existing and proposed, that's the comparison. The comparison between Delmarva to the Standard has to do with, has to do with the volume being the same, which is what you're pointing out, but that's a different, I think that's a different thing. I mean, what, in the current report, the three of the four areas, we are reducing, the volume stays, sorry, the volume is reduced and the... Give me a second here. I think we're getting, or at least I was getting confused on the two things that you were asking. But in between the Delmarva and the unit, those two were the situations where the graph should be different as you were just kind of marking up. The report that's been submitted utilizing the standard hydrograph is in compliance with the DEP regulations. Three of those are meeting based on the volume reducing. So in our tables here, you know, through that report, if you go to the new report, the volumes reduce. The only time the volume stayed the same is from, the switch from Delmarva to Standard. So, you know, if you, like, if we get rid of that, I switched the report from Delmarva to Standard. So if we're talking about the standard, the new report that you submitted in May, in that, we're meeting, for three of the areas, we're meeting because the volume is reduced. And at no point in the, in those curves, in that same, utilizing the same hydrograph thing, does the proposed exceed the existing. So in that, the shape's the same. The only time the shapes are different is Delmarva to Standard, in terms of peaking time.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
No, I think you're confusing, is looking, we switched to the new hydrograph, the new, we switched the standard from Delmarva, right? I submitted that report to you. Looking at that new report that was submitted to you, in those tables, the volume doesn't stay the same. And so that, we had this discussion previously. And if you look at the new report that was submitted to you in May, and you go to our tables five, seven, and eight, or whichever numbers they were... tables five, seven and eight, or whichever numbers they were, the pre, the pre and post volumes are different. The only time they stayed the same was as I, I, as I told you previously on, on a conversation, I think you're referring to a draft strange report that we had submitted that, that had, when we had changed from Delmarva to standard, but the table hadn't been updated.
No, the, the table shows the same volume.
It doesn't.
It, it does.
I mean, I have these tables. I submitted a memo, uh, that, a, a memo that walked through to those tables. The, the volumes are different.
During the last meeting, we, we held here, we discussed this issue and you were going to look into it.
Well, I did look into it.
And with, with the discussion is here is based on the la, the latest version of the stormwater report that is dated May 5th. So it's.
It's, I mean, I have those charts. They, the, the, in, in every situation, the, the volume is less.
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's the same. And you, when you compare the old version of the, of the report.
We're comparing the old version of the, the old version of the report was done with a different, it was done on the Delmarva. What we should be comparing is the, is the report done with the new standard.
What is puzzling is that the volume that you had in your previous report with the Delmarva unit hydrograph has the exact same volume.
I just mentioned that, that, that was in a, I believe you were looking at it. We had sent you a draft version of a revised report that didn't.
I, I don't, I don't think so.
I'm trying.
I disagree.
I'm looking right now, just for the record, at your stormwater management report dated, because I didn't get a draft report sent to me, but dated revised May 10th. Revised May 5th, 2023. May 5th is the last revision date, sorry. So, and the one prior to that, I was looking at January 11th because that was the only one that this board, the only other one that this board received. So those are the two reports that we have to, to compare the up, the change from Delmarva to standard.
So the.
Why do we need to compare the two reports?
That's what I'm trying to get at, that, that's, that we change.
Because the end result of the tables from this massive change and an increase in water volume, an increase in water volume, pre-development peak flow rate, an increase in.
There wasn't an increase in volume, there was an increase in rate.
Okay. And you always have to go and compare the reports.
What if that first report was wrong? I mean, we told them it was no good. They did a new one. Can we look at this new one?
That's what we're looking at.
What if there was no?
And he.
Because when you compare, when you compare the old one with the new one, it just happened that they have the same volume and they shouldn't.
No, I, I, I understand.
Yeah, unless, unless, yeah.
So what, yeah, what do we need in this new report to double check the calculations in the new report? Is it a matter of underlying data? Is it, we need the actual calculations of that model that are from the computer? They need to, they need to show their work. They need to provide the calculations.
The latter, yeah. Yeah, the latter.
Can those calculations be provided?
Uh, uh, I mean, we, we utilize the hydrocard program. This is a, that's a widely accepted program used by every town, DEP.
Hold on a second. I want to ask my witness a question. The soft, you're saying that you used software that produced the calculations that Dr. Gonzalez is looking at, looking for?
Uh, correct, for two arguments.
Okay, so the software that you used, you're saying is readily accepted by municipalities and planning boards across the state of New Jersey? Yes or no?
Yes.
Do you dispute that, Dr. Gonzalez?
Um, no, I, I, hold on, hold on, hold on. I do.
Dino.
I, I do use it myself. Actually, I build the models air, I mean, every week I'm, I'm either reviewing or designing myself. I do it myself.
Not what I asked.
No, no. So the other thing is that the, the models are fantastic tools. But if you put garbage into it, it just gets garbage out. So the fact that the, it's a model, the, I mean, there is no problem with the software itself because the, the software has been proved repeatedly, million times. The thing is that if you input the wrong numbers, the software is not culpable of what you put. It's just, the outcome is whatever you put. It's, it's no matter of the software. We're not questioning the software.
I understand your point, yeah.
So, so does this report have the underlying data? You could use that, so that's, that's what we need.
Well, my question is, would reports typically have what the underlying assumptions that you put, plugged into the, into the software model?
I, I mean, it lists in, in that report would list the TC, it would list the ground cover, it would list all those things in it. You know, if, if need be, we could provide you the hydrocat file if that's something you want to look at.
Well, what else could you provide that hasn't been provided? Why don't we start there?
I, I, I mean, the, the hydrocat file, I mean, if, if you want to, I mean, that's.
Is that the only thing that you could provide is the hydrocat?
I mean, we, we had talked, it's discussed about potentially adding some.
I just asked whether, is that the only thing you could provide?
Yes.
That's it. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that would be great. Okay.
Madam Chair, I want to request a two-minute recess to confer. Back on the record?
Yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Gonzalez, can you please outline or state precisely what it is you need from Mr. Savage?
If he is willing to provide the original copy of the model, that would be great.
Mr. Savage, do you understand what Dr. Gonzalez means by that?
Yes.
Yes. Is that all that you require, Dr. Gonzalez?
For now, yes.
Well.
Well, Mr. Yosino, there were other requests made in documents.
All right, so that's all that you.
Yeah, for now, yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, I can contact Mr. Savage if I have any additional questions.
Will you, will you pledge to contact Mr. Savage so that the two of you can work out the highly technical engineering issues before the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. On, on that basis, we, we will provide that information to Dr. Gonzalez, you know, immediately after this meeting, well in advance of the next meeting.
Are there other materials that you require? Or were there other submissions that we are still lacking that were, had been promised?
Mr. Savage?
There was just those comments that he brought up in the review letter about adding the, the analysis of the offsite runoff into the report. There's those couple of reports, but I think he should probably review the, the design files and then we make whatever changes that may come out of that.
Into those reports? Okay. But you can supplement those reports after he reviews the design?
It would make sense to do it at that point.
Can you do that before the next meeting?
Depends on when we talk and.
Can you try to do that before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Well, we, we have to do it before the next meeting. So I, I think, Mr. Savage, are you clear as to what Dr. Gonzalez is requesting?
At this point, yes. It's just a copy of our design files.
That's relative to the stormwater design?
It's a file extension dot H I, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Savage, I, I don't know who should take the lead, but I, I think we need to be precise about this because as much as we enjoy being here, you know, would, Mr. Savage, would you undertake to send an email to Dr. Gonzalez tomorrow confirming exactly what it is he needs? And Dr. Gonzalez, would you promptly respond to that in either, in either the affirmative or correct him in some way so that we're, so that you two are on the same page in terms of what information is supposed to be providing?
Yes, I mean, the, the file that he needs to provide is a file with extension dot HCE, which is the original file for the hydrocard model. And then when I review that, I'm going to do it as soon as I can. I'm going to contact Mr. Savage.
All right, Mr. Savage, I think if you could send an email that states exactly what it is you'll be providing and if you can confirm it, then hopefully we get you all the information that you're looking for.
Okay, will that then result in a final stormwater report? Is that, I mean, how do we classify a final stormwater report?
At that point, we could finalize a report with the exception of.
The January.
On those tests in January.
You can get that done right away as well?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Prior to the next meeting, we'll have a final report?
Subject to the.
Subject to January, right.
Yes, Mr. Savage?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have ample time for submission, consent board.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll talk, I'm out next week, but we'll have someone talk. We'll figure that part out next week and then, well, I don't know when the next hearing is, but.
Next hearing is August 24th. Thank you.
When you're passing this file, just to be super precise, there's a goal and a rationale here to align on the calculations because right now you have a discrepancy on the views. Do you have a contingency for when there is alignment in, you know, in favor of the application or in favor of the discrepancy that, uh, where's? I'm saying, what are you going to do if, if it turns out, you know, the calculations are off?
Well, let's, let them.
Okay. But that's the idea is to make sure everyone knows the numbers are the same, right?
The, the idea is to hopefully have everything come together.
And this file will cure that?
This file going to Al, to Albaro, Albaro will be able to either agree with the numbers that's submitted or disagree based on scientific numbers, based on that.
The, the game plan is for the engineers to have a meeting of the minds on the open issues that have been discussed.
I've never seen them agreeing in my digital field, but let's see how this goes. Okay.
Is that agreed to as well?
Yes, they said yes.
A final resubmission of the.
We offered it, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Sari asked the question and our engineer answered in the affirmative. It will be final but for the testing that needs to be done in June, January through April.
Is it testimony or are we getting a paper?
He said we submit a report.
We submit the report. Mr. Savage will be back and he will briefly testify and answer questions in regards to what was submitted. If there are no further questions on this topic for Mr. Savage, well, I guess I asked the question whether there are any other questions for Mr. Savage in regards to the, I'll call them stormwater issues that have been discussed.
Yeah, I have a question about the bioretention basin. And Boswell memo referenced the EMP manual, chapter 9.7. That relates to small-scale bioretention. Is that, is that the system that you've designed your bioretention basin?
It's a small basin on the south side of the, the surface.
Yeah, so that, okay.
That's a, that's the bioretention basin.
All right, and that's to satisfy the green infrastructure requirement?
Correct.
But isn't that, doesn't that basin, like it infiltrates through the dirt, but then it goes to a pipe and then gets stored?
So it provides through, through that circulation, which is part of what we submitted to, to, to Dr. Gonzalez was to show that, that that water perches to that, that's water quality, that provides water quality, that basin, because it has an underdrain, doesn't address, it doesn't, it doesn't need to address elsewhere, it doesn't address, you know, recharge.
Yeah, that was my, my issue.
So that basin is, is basically used for water quality. Then the discharge from that actually flows to basin A, which is under the garage, which provides reductions and that part of it.
Mm-hmm. So my question is, without the recharge, does it satisfy the green infrastructure requirements without a waiver?
I'm not sure. Without the recharge, what do you mean?
Well, doesn't it have to address the quantity, quality and recharge?
So with the, we had gone through previous testimony.
Yeah.
Of course, with the recharge, this, and, and with infiltration, the, the soil test that we did originally, then we went back out to another round, all showed that, that the soil, the site effectively has no permeability, no recharges occurring, there's no, there were no net deficit. I believe that, that was, was agreed to and I, I think it might have been under the previous board engineer, but one of the reviewers, I believe, had agreed with those that submit that resubmission where we addressed those comments. To me, we're beyond that. I mean, I, that was, we had previously addressed that.
Yeah, I know, it was previously addressed and then maybe a couple meetings ago, you know, I asked about whether it satisfied green infrastructure and Dr. Gonzalez indicated that it did not. And I'm just trying to understand what the, the disconnect is there.
I'm not, I don't remember that in particular. I know the discussion was about whether or not it was actually providing, you know, that, that the permeability in that soil actually allowed the soils to flow through it and reach the underdrain, I believe is sort of what he was discussing. And then we had submitted the memo specifically related to the bioretention basin, which in this, in his most recent response, I believe the only thing, comment that he had remaining relative to that basin was that we would bring it up a couple inches or wherever that was to, to provide a two-foot separation from the Super Mahal.
But so it's, it's your, okay. So it's your testimony that this satisfies your green infrastructure requirement without the recharge?
That, 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 that green infrastructure component of that, of that thing, of that bioretention basin, yes.
Okay.
You know, there's, we had gone through the drainage report, other aspects, you know, in the report is, is a section on green infrastructure, low, low impact development checklist and things like that that also weighed in on the green infrastructure. I believe one of the previous comments, and it may have been the previous board engineer asked us to add in the discussion to the report concerning green infrastructure, which was done.
And then in conjunction with your other stormwater management control devices, you'll satisfy all the water quality, water quantity requirements of the DEA?
Yeah, we've got, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I mean, that, that, we ended up adding a couple water quality structures. You know, this, I think was a new experience where we, we feel, you know, based on the development, we don't need to address it and back and forth. And we ended up providing some water quality structures plus the bioretention basin, which provides water quality. So, so all of those surfaces that have cars on them, you know, the, the entrance drive, the lower parking area, those are going through water quality structures.
Okay. That's all I had.
Do you want to open up to the public?
Are you?
I, well, uh, uh, so we have Mr. Savage, who's also going to testify and, and provide an option with regard to the wall, where the transformer is. You may recall at the last meeting, there was some discussion about perhaps stepping the wall and stepping the fence back. We've submitted plans in that regard and Mr. Savage was going to testify to that. I did not know, Madam Chair, whether you wanted to open up the stormwater portion of his testimony to the public now or whether you wanted him to proceed with the wall testimony and then open it up to the public for any question that, that's.
Okay, yeah. Want to, if anybody, if any member of the public has any questions regarding the testimony that you've heard this evening so far from Mr. Savage?
you've heard this evening so far from Mr. Savage, please approach the mic. This is based on the stormwater management portion of the discussion and the water pressure that we discussed. Any of those issues are up for questions. State your name and your municipality. And seeing none, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Savage, can you please describe your most recent submission with regard to the wall and compare that to what is currently shown on the plans so that the board can...
So what I'm showing here is, this is a exhibit that was submitted with our most recent submission on the, I think it was July 6th, it might have been. This is just a grading and drainage exhibit, sheet 101.
Is that the actual sheet or is that...
The actual sheet that was submitted.
Okay. And was it dated?
This one is dated 6/27/23.
Okay. Mr. Sari, I don't think we need to mark it since it's the actual sheet that was submitted if that's agreeable to you. Fine, okay. Go ahead and...
The purpose of this plan was to show on the, the current submitted site plans, the full set, down in this corner of the building here, we have, we have a wall that is extending off this corner of the building and running out towards the, basically kind of towards the intersection of, of Sunset and Bloomfield. There was discussion, that wall at a certain point did reach elevation of around 16 foot. From, looking at it from the parking area, looking back, you would, you would see that wall, that height. In front of that wall were the transformers, and, and part of the dog park was also in front of that wall. So there was discussion about the option of, of providing a stepped wall, which was the purpose of this exhibit. So basically, this has a, a lower wall, let's call it, which is a six-foot wall. Then there's a three-foot gap to the secondary wall, which is a five-foot. And then a fence was offset, three feet off of that so as not to count relative to the wall height. So then this, that, that stepped wall gets us to the grades we need on, on this side of the site here. So that's the option. In order to do that, the dog park was a little smaller, a little change in the configuration there, and then, and the, sort of the bigger thing that you would notice would be the transformers, which were tucked up here, close to the building, now have to be shifted out here closer towards the street down here off of the, the parking area, the drive aisle. These things are teething. We did have, and I believe this was previously submitted, this is just one of the exhibits that the architect had provided, and this is just to show you, you know, looking, you know, looking onto the site from Sunset Avenue, you're, you're looking at the building here, this is the lower parking area, in this area, and you can see behind the tree here and such. That's that retaining wall. And so from this view, what you're looking at is, you know, you also in the same view would have, you know, this, this building wall with some of the same materials on portions of it, and then you would have this other wall on this other side, which is, you know, compared to the building, obviously much shorter. And in this scenario, the transformers would be tucked in back here, sort of behind where that tree would be, or where that tree is. So that, that's, that's the, sort of the two options at this point.
The transformers having been moved, can you pull up that architectural picture again and give us sort of a, would they be anywhere visible on that particular picture? Or do you think they'd be off to the left?
I would say they would be right back, sort of behind where this tree is, sort of where it's kind of obscured back here, because they, they were kind of tucked up closer to the building line.
Yep.
This is where the building comes and it turns to the wall.
Yep.
So that, they were tucked in sort of right back there.
Would it be possible, or would you be amenable to, bless you, again, you don't get a third. Would you be amenable to providing screening with shrubbery and/or trees? I know that you probably want to put some sort of fencing so people don't, I don't know if you're even interested in fencing, but would it, would screening with some sort of shrubbery be possible?
On, on this location or here, just in general?
On that particular...
On this one, yes. I mean, we just have to maintain, I think it's three feet from the transformers. Obviously, on the, the side facing the, the drive aisle, we would have that open for access and things such as that, but, but on the other side and certainly towards the street...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's certainly feasible.
Does anyone have questions about the reconfiguration of the wall?
Does the location of the transformers, does that change? The driveway configuration at all?
No, that tucks in there, same, same curve line.
I just want to say, since the last meeting, I paid attention to transformers on the ground and see, funny to see them everywhere if you start looking.
Yeah.
Most of them seem to be out in the open.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's great to put them in a, you know, it doesn't mean they need to, you know, be showcased, but putting at ease the board and, and the applicant, like, that doesn't seem like anything out of the ordinary to have transformers on a ground covered, you know, close by or shrubbery or not.
I would prefer...
Yeah.
Screening at least street side, just to look a little bit nicer. It's your building, but I think it would look nicer with shrubs.
We'll, we'll agree to appropriate screening as recommended by the, the board engineer.
Does anyone else have any, thank you. Does anyone else, does anyone else have any questions about, does, generally speaking, are people more, do they prefer, does the board prefer this stepped wall system over the other option? I'm not going to say that those are the two options, but you've done what is, comports with our ordinance in this particular option.
Well, that's a good question. Let me ask, in the...
We were seeking...
See, the mics go out on me, I have to read my voice. We, we were seeking a deviation with regard to the, the wall under the plans that we submitted. With the revised plan, are we still seeking a deviation, or is the revised plan compliant with the ordinance?
We, we would still need that...
Deviation.
Deviation, but less. It's now from, like, you know, where this wall previously, we would have needed a deviation. One spot where, you know, the retaining wall up here along the, the main access, in that location, we didn't have the room to shift the, the fence off of that wall. So in that situation, you would have a, I believe that fence, that wall there would still need that waiver. I think the last hearing, we talked about reducing the places where that...
So the last iteration, there was, what was the height of the, the highest point of the wall?
This one down here was 16.
The past, so the first iteration was 16?
In, in this location near, that we're talking about.
And what is this, and what is the highest wall?
This one, the, the wall here is six foot.
Okay. And the ordinance is four?
I think in this location, six is permitted.
Okay, so...
Four...
What are we, what are we asking for? What are you...
I'm just, for this wall, you wouldn't need it. For the wall that's in the front yard, which is the one up here, that one, the four-foot is the trigger on that one.
Because it should be three.
And, and with the fence on top of that one, because we don't have the room to locate the fence off of it, you had the conversation, the fence would include it.
It does.
That wall technically would, would then trigger that, that need for that...
So it'll be seven with the fence?
I mean, the barriers, I mean, yeah, I think that the height of that wall the most is, is four feet, so the wall...
Yeah, just to reiterate...
Where in the front? Can you point to it?
It's, uh...
In front of the driveway?
Up here at the drop-off.
Well, can you blow that up a little?
That's what I thought.
I'm so sorry. I just, thank you. I didn't even know where your cursor was. That's how off I was.
So, you know, at certain points, this wall is four, the wall itself is four feet, but given the proximity where that is, we didn't have room, you know, we, obviously we didn't want to move the wall closer to road and mess with the tree. So that one technically would need that.
Where the hell are you?
So...
This is up at the main entrance, right before the garage entrance.
Really?
Yes.
I thought we were talking about the walls over by the Montclair side there.
We were, and then you asked where, you, you asked where we still needed the deviation. So I'm explaining where we still need the deviation.
So the wall's over on the building side where you reduced the size of the dog park. Are there any deviations?
On that wall, no.
No. That whole area complies.
That, that area there, that wall.
Okay. So now we're moving on to a second section that I hadn't, I didn't even know that we discussed as yet. Okay. So this is a retaining wall. Do we have a front view of this from the architectural standpoint at all?
I don't, I don't have those.
Okay.
Let me see if the other photo I just, or the other exhibit. Yeah. So this kind of shows it, it's tucked in.
And that wall there?
In front of it. See right there at the little...
Looks like a little wall.
It's, the wall itself is four feet. What kind of kicks us over is the...
The fencing.
The fencing screened by plantings.
You mean the fencing there?
The, the height of the wall, I think the wall is over 32 inches, or sorry, 30 inches. You, you, you would need for fall protection and, you know, have a little garb there so your cars don't go off of it. It's not high, you don't know who's going to die from it, but, but yes, we need some of that.
Okay. And what's the length of that wall? At that, at the...
Excuse me?
What is the length?
The length of the wall at that height, that, it stays that height the entire length? And what is that length?
I don't, I don't have that length. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, I don't have that one. I mean, we're, we're probably in like the 100-foot range. I don't have that.
That's a 100-foot wall?
I, length-wise?
Yeah.
It, it could be, yeah. I mean, you're, yeah, I mean, you're looking at a stall here of 18 foot. I mean, there's, it could easily be around 100 feet.
And does it wrap?
It turns here, that, that dash, the dash, so you got this from here.
Where, where is your cursor? I don't even, okay, thank you. So it wraps around the side there a little bit?
Mm-hmm. So there's a section here, this section, that would be less. So let's call for the four-foot thing, maybe it's the 80-foot range, but you're in, you're in that, you're in that same range there.
It, it doesn't get to four foot until it's halfway down across the front there.
Would they require a fence if it's under four foot?
Under...
Three foot?
It's the 30, the, the 30-inch thing.
Okay.
So it's, and, and we were trying not to mess with the grain too much in the front because of that trick was sort of what was driving us, that we had those two sort of competing things. So that's why this wall, I mean, we certainly have, if the tree wasn't there, we certainly have the room to grade this out and, and probably not have a wall, but...
Do you want to save the tree?
The goal was to save the tree at previous meetings. I know that was a big concern, so that's why we ended up where we're at.
Again, I think this is an area where if you can, after it's done, maybe do additional plantings to maybe hide a little more of the wall and...
Yeah, and, and just to go back to that previous exhibit, you can see in this, there's already...
Yeah.
A lot of low plantings, you know, that wall is kind of hard to see just in this exhibit. And this would grow in, there's even some lower stuff in here too, but, yeah.
So from the perspective of the board?
I didn't have a strong feeling either way.
Okay.
Kind of retaining wall, bigger dog park for this option.
Yeah. I had a question in terms of that transformer area and the, you said it doesn't require a design waiver or any type of variance because it's six feet and that complies. Is that a terrace six feet? So it's six on six?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so there's, so this first dash line here would be a six-foot, a six-foot wall.
Yeah.
Then there's a required space for the code.
Yep.
Then we have the second-tiered wall, and that's a five-foot wall.
Okay.
And then we're keeping the fence off that as required by code, so it's not heightened.
And the other one, when it was just a straight wall, it was 16?
And then fence.
And the floor was a little bit lower to fit the transformers, right?
Yeah.
Because that's...
We were, we were holding that back, exactly, and then, and now we have more room to kind of grade around the building because that was a previous wall.
Gotcha. Or was that 16 feet calculated, retaining wall plus the fence? That was 16?
That, that was actually the, the wall.
That was just the wall, and then there was the fence on top. Right. Yeah.
So the, you know, combination, this changing the wall, and this just allows us to have the step wall that...
Yeah. But in terms of what I'm looking at, if I'm standing in that parking area, if I'm looking up at the fence or the top of the retaining wall, it's in the same area. I'm still looking up, say like 20 feet from where I'm standing.
This one kind of cuts back towards you, where the other one just went straight.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, there's some relief in the wall in that sense, but, but I mean, ultimately, you're still, you're looking at a, ultimate height is close. You know, this wall, because of the step and where we load it, the whole wall, we have six and a five, 11 feet.
Gotcha.
So just given how we changed the grading, the overall wall, it's a little less.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion is either way, I think, is fine, but I, you know, in terms of the impacts, I mean, I'd be fine with the straight 16-foot retaining wall to add a bit more space to the dog park and tuck the transformers away, but on balance, I don't think it makes a difference.
I think that for the sort of neighborhood compatibility issue, I like the redesigned version, and I think we have that in our code for a reason, and I do think that a 16, you know, 15, 16-foot high monolitic wall is a humongous structure, no matter where you're looking at it from, especially if you put a fence on top of it. So I do think this, at least in the dog park area, I mean, I think that this is a reasonable compromise to get closer to the intent of code.
I would chime in here. I certainly agree. I think the changes are, at least to our zoning code, and I think when you tier them, I always go by down Grove Avenue by the high school when they tier those walls. It just breaks it up and they do plantings in between, so I think you can plant on an upper level if you want, and I think it just blends it into the landscaping a little bit more. So yes, I agree with you. I like your changes, and I am okay with this plan.
I'm happy with the tiered wall. I know that you're missing a little bit of dog park, but hopefully they'll take a long walk down to the end of that block and go into the reservation. There's huge reservation if they have dogs. They can go and enjoy there too.
Yeah, I also agree that the tiered wall, I think, look better for the neighborhood and the residents, so I like the redesign. Thank you.
Tiered wall, tiered wall it is?
I'm sorry?
Tiered wall it is.
Tiered wall it is. There will, I, I guess the board has to acknowledge that the applicant will be asking for a waiver on the wall in the front, as well as the, the other waiver being the two, one and a half parking spots that are in front.
The front, the front yard parking, yeah.
So are those the only two?
Yes. I'll, I'll ask Mr. Savage, because those are the only two that I have.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else from the board have any other questions regarding, go ahead now.
I have a question, going back to the Boswell report from June 1st about the fire truck being a 48-foot and that the fire department requesting that they be able to make the turn without backing up. Is that, does that, any of this interfere with that?
No, well, go ahead, Mr. Savage. It does not, right?
The, the, the plan with, that we last produced with the fire truck turning, the truck does... truck does make, you know, it's making those, uh, backup maneuvers.
So, so we had Mr. Dill, if you recall that, um, we, we showed a redesign where the driveway coming up would bow out into the buffer and would permit the fire truck to make a continuous turn without having to make any backup maneuvers whatsoever. But in order to do that, um, it would have had to encroach into the, uh, buffer. And the consensus of the board, uh, was that it, it would prefer to keep the driveway as is so that the buffer would remain intact. Uh, and so what that resulted in was that the fire truck, if it wanted to come all the way up to the building, would essentially have to make a, a K-turn to get back down. But the, the testimony was that there was sufficient room for the truck to make a K-turn and get back down to Sunset Avenue. Is that correct, Mr. Savage?
Correct.
Okay. I just want, you know, with, with these additional changes, I just didn't know if any of this would interfere with, that's what basically-
Okay. So, so the, the, uh, the change with the wall, uh, becoming, uh, you know, a staggered wall as opposed to a monolithic wall, I guess the question is, does that impact the, the driveway in any way? Or will that in any way affect the ability of fire trucks to negotiate the driveway?
No. The, the, that wall is actually in a different parking lot than where we had the fire truck maneuvering. Uh, so that wall isn't anywhere near that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Mr. Encino?
You want to open it up to the public?
I'm just saying, did you have any-
Oh, no, I have no further questions. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anybody, if anybody from the public has any questions regarding the testimony on the walls, the transformer movement, et cetera, that you just heard about, please come to the mic and name and municipality. Seeing none, we will close public participation.
Okay. So thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we had hoped to conclude tonight, but we're not going to. Um, we will, uh, the engineers will confer in the manner that we discussed. We will provide Dr. Gonzalez, um, the information that he requested. Um, and that's all that we will have for next time before, you know, we would, at that point, have concluded our, uh, case. Um, and, you know, procedurally, I guess I would ask the, the board, typically, um, you know, there would be public, uh, comments as opposed to questions on the case, followed by a closing statement and board deliberation. Just wanted to confirm that that's the process used by the board.
Right.
Thank you.
That's, and I look forward to that.
Mr. Encino from housekeeping. Um, this, uh, the planning board has a special meeting, um, scheduled for August 14th.
14th.
It'll be a public meeting. We will immediately go into closed session. There's a, um, a pending litigation matter on the agenda. Um, because that's a public meeting, this will be carried to that meeting and then sub, and then subsequently carried. Um, I'm not sure that we're allowed to carry this for two meetings without notice at the next meeting, so.
You, you can. Um, I mean, or you could just carry, you could just carry this-
Or you could carry it and carry it again, just to, to-
Or, or you want to-
Just carry it to the regular meeting.
You can just carry it to the regular meeting.
Gosh.
Okay. Um, I've never done it that way, but I, I'll defer to your knowledge on that. I've always, uh, if there's just bad, I always do them consecutive meetings. But, uh, all right, we'll carry this to the regular meeting on August 24th, Thursday night. And, uh, this applicant, you consent to, uh-
Yeah. Just to make sure the, so, so for the benefit of the public, then the meeting will be carried with no further notice to the public to August, uh, 24th at 7:30 PM right here in this room. Uh, again, no, no further notice to the public. This is the notice. The applicant consents to, uh, an extension of time to that thing.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, before we adjourn, I just had a quick question for, um, Mayor Roman and Mayor McVois.
You can't screw up if you just do it that way.
Now that we've got the reorgs on our belt, what, what is the plan for a board planner? Do we know?
I'm interviewing.
You're interviewing? Okay. What, what, what's the timeline looking like?
I think mid-August.
Okay.
We're putting a couple of banners and put bids in and discuss with all of them.
Okay. Great. Excellent. Does anyone else have any other new business?
Can I ask a question before you adjourn?
The time for, the time for public-
Nobody asked, nobody-
I did that in the beginning of the meeting, but can we, can we form a new, I'm going to open one last time to public comment? Please, go ahead.
I just want to ask a question. If this is going to be continued-
Just state your name and your municipality.
Yes. My name is Chris Riley. I live in Verona.
Okay.
Uh, my question is if this is going to be carried over to the August meeting, is that the meeting where the public should be prepared to?
Yes. I would assume yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Wait, who seconded it?
Just make it up.
Thank you.
That's a good chance.
We're all adjourned.
Mr. Roman seconded, I understand.